We will now call the planning board meeting to order. We're going to start off with our roll call. William Roach.
Present.
Thomas Thompson.
Present.
Tamara Lipscomb, I am present. Joe Towns.
Present.
James Motley.
Present.
If you are here for the proposed rezoning of Salem Church Road, that has been postponed and it will not be discussed tonight. Just if you're here for that, it has been postponed. This time we're going to have the adoption of the May 21st, 2025 agenda. Motion. Okay. Will someone make a motion or move to adopt the agenda?
I move to adopt the minutes.
Can I get a second?
A second.
Okay. All right. It's been moved in properly second that we adopt the agenda for May 21st, 2025. All in favor? Your right hand? It's majority. Thank you. At this time, we need to elect a 2025 chairperson. So are there any nominees?
I nominate Tamara Lipscomb for chairperson.
It's been moved in properly second that Tamara Lipscomb will be the chairperson for the planning and zoning board. All in favor? Can I vote for myself?
Yes.
Okay.
Why not?
I'm sorry.
Everybody else is doing it.
Okay. And then we also need a vice chair.
I'd like to nominate Mr. Thompson.
You second?
I second.
Okay. It has been moved in properly second that Mr. Thompson will be our vice chair. All in favor? Let it be known by the right hand. Okay? Motion carried. Thank you. All right. Let's see, approval of the minutes for March 19th, 2025.
Madam Chairman, there are a couple of typos regarding our names. Page three, I'm afraid they didn't include the H in my first name.
Okay.
And there are a couple incidences in here where they're spelling Jason Harden's last name with a G at the end.
Okay. Any other corrections? Hearing none. Would someone move to accept the minutes from our March meeting with the necessary corrections?
I so moved.
Okay. Can I get a second?
Second.
It has been moved in properly second that we accept the March 2025 minutes with the necessary corrections. All in favor? Let it be known by the right hand. That's the majority. No opposers. Okay. Items for consideration. We go with the first item. Consideration of a conditional rezoning request to rezone a property located on Ashcroft Drive, Rockingham County Parcel Number 179807, from residential 12, which is R12, to conditional zoning residential 12 CZ R12, docket number CZ 202503. Jason.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Good evening, members of the board. Tonight, LaMonica Properties LLC is petitioning with written consent with the current property owner to rezone a property located on Ashcroft Drive. This is Rockingham County Tax Parcel Number 179807 to conditional zoning residential 12 CZ R12. The current zoning is residential 12. The owner of the property is Ashcroft Development LLC. The parcel encompasses a total combined area of 23.273 acres. This deviates from the tax records acreage, which shows it as 31.49. The reason for that discrepancy upon investigation is because there's three separate lots that have the same parcel number for some reason. At one point in time, they were all combined, and for whatever reason, as they subdivided everything out, they never put new tax numbers for those lots. So this is just specifically for this one lot that you're looking at, even though they all share the same parcel number. So I just wanted to point that out. The condition of the land is undeveloped. It's a vacant lot. City water service is existing and available adjacent to these properties or to this property. Water and sewer service are available approximately 200 feet to the east within the right-of-way of Freeway Drive, 150 feet to the south within the right-of-way of Ashcroft Drive, and at the end of Ashland Drive to the west. There are no streams on site. However, the property is located in both the Jordan Lake watershed and the Troublesome Creek watershed. As we know, as y'all did a watershed conditional zoning a couple months ago, as we know, a clustered development provision, removing the minimum lot size is allowed by right in Article 14 of the zoning ordinance by right as a means to reduce the impact on the surrounding natural area. That's in the watershed regulations that come down from the state. So this is by right cluster development. However, the water supply watershed regulations do not allow deviation from the required setbacks, just the minimum lot size. So the applicant is requesting to deviate from the setback standards. The applicant sent notice of the development to the surrounding property owners extending an offer to meet with neighborhood residents on May the 8th. A copy of the letter that was mailed to them is in your agenda packets provided by the developer. The floodplain insurance rate map or the firm does not show any floodplains on site. As we know, a conditional zoning request that means the zoning map with site-specific conditions incorporated into the amendment, which allows the owner and the developer, the applicant, to place voluntary conditions on the land with the intent of restricting allowable uses within the new zoning district or to ask for deviations from certain standards. The owner and the applicant have requested to limit the allowable land uses to single-family detached dwellings, single-family attached dwellings, or townhomes as we know them, and two-family dwellings, which are commonly called duplexes. Note that these are all by right uses in R12. This is the existing zoning. There's no deviation of use from what's currently allowed on this property. An HOA and homeowners association is required as a provision of a townhouse development. So that an HOA would be required, even if this wasn't coming before y'all. That's required by our ordinance. So there will be an HOA to maintain the watershed land that's not developed and the maintenance of the buildings and so forth. That's required. The following development conditions were requested by the developer. Provision of a 20-foot wide natural landscape vegetative buffer around the property boundary that's supplemented with evergreen plantings and privacy fencing where no natural vegetation exists or it's not practical to leave it there. So there will be a 20-foot buffer to try to provide some separation because, as we know, the development on Ashland and Ashcroft is a little bit bigger lots, just not quite the same. So the developer provides that buffer just for, you know, to not have such an abrupt transition to a cluster development, even though, as we know, by right, they could still do a cluster development right now if they submitted everything and got approvals. So again, they're requesting to deviate from the setback requirement. So they could do a cluster development by right now, you know. So just keep that in mind. Total density is limited by the application to 200 units, no more than 200 units. 184 units are noted on the conditional zoning concept plan, which we have that in here. This is for the applicant, but it's in your packets as well. So this is the concept plan that they provided, which shows 184 units. But they're asking for an option to increase density to 200 as a condition, meaning that as a minor change, if it's approved, that they would be able to make changes to the plan, which would be considered minor changes, and they would be able to increase up to 200 units. So that's one of the first conditions or the second condition that they're asking for. Also, they request the condition that a pedestrian crosswalk be provided along E.V. Wilkins Way to the Ashcroft Commons Shopping Center over there for just improved walkability and connectivity. Of course, that's subject to NC DOT, North Carolina Department of Transportation approval because that is their right-of-way. That is not city's right-of-way. So anything that's done there would have to have NC DOT approval. But that would be a proposed condition. So if it's not feasible by NC DOT, of course, we couldn't hold them responsible for not doing that if NC DOT said something couldn't go here. Road standard shall be as shown on the concept plan, the typical cross section. That's in the lower left-hand corner there. That's your typical cross section, which shows your curb-to-curb width, your total right-of-way width, and where your sidewalks go within the right-of-way. So that's the width of your right-of-way. If you can look at that in your packets, it's probably a little bit more logical. But it does meet our typical section standard. So there's no deviation from the allowed cross section. The lot dimensional standards shall be as shown on the concept plan with 20-foot front yard setbacks, 20-foot rear yard setbacks, and 5-foot side yards, and 50-foot side yard setbacks for corner lots. You always have a higher setback on a corner lot because of visibility when you're turning. You obviously don't want an impeding sight line. So that's why you typically have a more extensive setback on a corner lot. Finally, this was the wording that they put in the application verbatim, which indicates they're looking for some flexibility on the plan when they go into preliminary subdivision approval with staff. The proposed project may include single-family detached townhouse and two-family dwelling duplex lots. As we said, they're limiting land use to those three things, those three specific land uses. Dwelling unit type and placement shown on the zoning concept plan is illustrative only. The areas of subject property that adjoins the single-family detached lots fronting on Ashland, illustratively shown as lots 11 through 39. So that's the ones closest to Ashland right there, 11 through 29, or 11 through 39, excuse me. And 88 through 93 shall be single-family detached lots. All other lots outside of this area may be single-family detached or single-family detached townhouse or two-family dwelling duplex lots, which shall be determined during the subdivision plan approval process. So basically, what that means is the way that we would approach that is that would be a minor change. There's no change of land use. So for us, that would still be a minor change, meaning that there's no change of land use, no change of density. They're just adjusting the type from where it is on the plan, essentially, from what that's how I read that and interpreted that. So that would be a minor change if there was any change to the layout of the site plan. You're not changing use. You're not increasing density beyond the 200 units that they're asking for. So that's pretty straightforward. The proposed concept plan limits construction, as I said, to 200 units. On the plan, it shows 150 single-family attached dwellings, 34 single-family detached dwellings, and of course, then again, as I said, density not to exceed 200 units. For Article 5, Section 1 of the zoning ordinance, a major change that alters the density of the development, decreases use of compatible design features, decreases pedestrian features, or changes the uses approved for the property must, again, go to the planning board and to the city council for approval. So if anything they want, you know, more than 200 units, then they would have to come back. They wouldn't be able to increase density without approval. We wouldn't permit that. So I would evaluate this from your end as if it's going to be 200 units because that's what you're looking at. The concept plan shows 184, but that could be increased to 200 with the condition that they're asking for. Minor changes that do not rise to the level of a major change may be approved administratively by the planning and community development director. So that's a minor change, like you're reorienting things, you're doing small things that are not major changes. Like if they wanted to reorient the way that the lots are shown or something like that, that's not doing any kind of change to land use and, like I said, density and things. So approval of the concept plan with the conditional zoning, as we always say, does not issue any approval for construction. A preliminary subdivision plat review must still be completed with the city's technical review committee, TRC, along with an applicable construction drawing review for infrastructure. So this is just to put the zoning in place. They still have to go through construction plan review. There's no construction approval issued here. So things like traffic, other things with construction that staff would review would go in the preliminary subdivision review. We've been made aware, staff has, of some traffic concerns with Ashland, with Ashland Drive. And we looked into this when we were formulating our report, and Ashland Drive was built in the early 90s when the Ashcroft development was being built. So it was built post-1989. So our most recent infrastructure standards, our land development specifications is what it's called, which dictates what roadway width is, what your, you know, the size of your road is for what you're doing for residential and so forth, was adopted in 1989, most recent addition, the same one we're using now. So these roads were built under the current specifications. So and you can tell by the way that this was built, like right at the end of that cul-de-sac, they didn't even concrete the cul-de-sac. It's gravel. So this was intended originally for a phase 2, 3, however they had planned it out back in the early 90s. Therefore, it seems logical that this was built to accommodate residential traffic. So from that aspect, we see Ashland is, you know, it's wide, 60-foot right-of-way. It's a 34-foot wide curb-to-curb. So it's built to our current standards. I show a little bit above its 60-foot right-of-way, so it's very wide. So as far as staff's perspective on Ashland, we don't see any concerns with residential traffic specifically being created here. With E.V. Wilkins, that is, as I said earlier, NC DOT right-of-way. That is the state's right-of-way. The city has no ability to require the developer to provide improvements to E.V. Wilkins. That will come during the subdivision preliminary plat review, where NC DOT will have to issue those permits, the driveway permit for them to tap into E.V. Wilkins. So if there's any improvements there necessary due to trips generated by this development, E.V. Wilkins, that would come from the state, not the city. As I said, with the crosswalk, this would just be a condition. We couldn't approve the crosswalk. That has to go through NC DOT. So any roadway improvements or whatever would be needed to the right-of-way of E.V. Wilkins Way would not be able to be city-approved. So that's something to keep in mind as well. So finally, the proposed conditional rezoning aligns with goal number three of the municipal land development plan to expand housing. This includes expanding the housing stock and providing a variety of housing options that are attractive and affordable to people of all income levels. This property is located in growth management area 3, suburban, which surrounds the city's center, primarily encompassing the areas to the south, southwest, north, northwest, and west of the city. Growth management area 3 is predominantly characterized by a mix of residential and commercial development with ample vacant land available for development, excuse me. According to the land development plan, GMA 3 prioritizes the expansion of residential development and provides an existing transportation network that's capable of accommodating growth. Additionally, GMA 3 residential development is in close proximity to commercial office and industrial employment as well as retail services. Staff finds the proposed conditional rezoning to be consistent with the municipal land development plan reasonable and in the public interest based on this report. Planning staff recommends that the proposed conditional rezoning be approved, and I'll be glad to answer any of your questions.
Thank you, Jason.
Jason, just for some clarification. Currently, this lot is already zoned R12, medium density.
Yes, sir. That's correct.
Okay. So what is, again, what is driving them to do the conditional? Is it, was it setbacks? Was that mainly?
With the reduction of the setbacks that requires the conditional zoning because, as I said, the cluster development, removing that minimum lot size of 12,000 square feet is allowed in the watershed, in the Troublesome Creek watershed. So that was not necessary to come before y'all to do. It's just the reduction in the setback to better plus with the units. That's the only deviation they've asked for from our ordinance. Everything else is voluntary conditions.
So if they didn't come back to us for a conditional, let's just say we're fine with the R12 as is. How many units could they have built?
They're still limited to, so they have been granted a special intensity allocation of up to 70% of the built-upon area. To go up to 70% built-upon area, about getting too technical with y'all because this is a very technical thing. Basically, because of the watershed, they're limited to 70% built-upon area, which means impervious. So 70% of this lot, of the acreage, that is the limit that they could build on. The rest of it has to stay natural, like dirt, essentially. You're reducing your impervious surface is the reason behind that. So they're limited by 70% built-upon area. That's density-wise. In R12, I think it's 12.5 units an acre.
10.5.
10.5.
10.5 acres. At 31 acres, 310, 70% of that.
It's tied.
So they could do 200 without even coming forth
Correct.
To us to make any
That's correct.
Kind of conditional changes.
That's correct. They're only limited by the built-upon area for non-single-family detached. For everything in this instance, everything, the single-family detached and the townhome. So that's their only limit, is that and the density, which they're well, they're under the density maximum that's allowed for the district, but the watershed caps that built-upon area.
And R12, single detached townhomes, duplexes. What else does R12 allow for residential?
If you went R12 with no conditional zoning, multifamilies allowed by right.
By right.
You can do multifamily development apartments by right. That's anything more than two units where it's not subdivided into units. There were townhomes, you owned the land underneath it. But getting out of that, you're getting into multifamily or what we call apartments. So yeah, you could do apartments on this lot by right currently, but just limited by the built-upon area capped by the watershed.
So the conditional zoning is actually, what they're proposing back to us is actually slightly less than what
Correct. It's less intense than what
What could be given by right?
That's correct.
Jason, I have a question.
Yes, sir.
Inasmuch as the setback is the only thing that they're requesting to deviate from, in your professional opinion, what, if any, impact does that have?
I mean, I think it's actually less than your impact because the more you can cluster and the more you can, especially in a watershed, that's better for your environment because you're going to increase your open space. So that's just my personal opinion. So I don't see a problem with a deviation from the setback requirement because we've done it for other watershed developments in the past and other projects too, like the one off Sherwood. So whenever there's a circumstance where you're looking at a necessary deviation, that's why the state allows you to do conditional zoning to allow for that. So I don't see an issue with a deviation.
Thank you. Lots 11 through 39
Yes.
And 88 through 93, they put in the application single detached. Those are the lots that, but the Ashcroft subdivision.
Correct.
If they decided they want to go to duplexes or townhomes with that, is that considered a major change that would have to come back before us?
No. If you read the, so it says shall be in here. So if you read the language here, the area of the subject property that adjoins the single-family detached lots fronting Ashland Drive, illustratively shown as lots 11 through 39 and 88 through 93, shall be single-family detached. So they're voluntarily restricting that. So if they come back and say, we're going to do townhomes, that's a condition change. We're coming back.
Before us.
Correct. Correct. So that will stay.
Any other questions for Jason? Okay. All right. Thank you. At this time, Mr. Applicant here would like to speak. Please come forward and state your name and your address.
Good evening.
Good evening.
My name is Lori Ford, and I'm with LaMonica Properties, the applicant for the site. Our address is 7 Corporate Center Court, Suite B, Greensboro, North Carolina, 27408. I also have with me John Ford and Brian Ford, who are also with LaMonica Properties that are available to answer questions if needed. Thank you very much for taking the time to hear our request this evening. Let me get this queued back down. Jason, you did a great job. So I'm going to abbreviate what I was originally going to present because I don't want to take up more time than we necessarily have to. So the subject property is, as Jason stated, about 23 acres. It was a little confusing because it's a combined acreage of 31 acres, but the specific application that we're making only deals with 23 acres approximately. And to your question, the current zoning of R12 allows for 10.5 units to the acre. So technically, assuming it met the impervious surface requirements, this property could generate up to 240 single-family residential units by right. So without any changes to zoning, we could move forward with that. We actually did make a submittal a few months ago with all townhomes laid out on this site. And we submitted for approval for utility services on the property as well for up to 200 units, and we received approval for that. Having looked at the site a little more thoroughly and kind of really studied the surrounding area, we felt it was in the best interest, not only of this property, but of the overall community, to make a change to how we approached zoning on this site. And so what we're doing is we're requesting something that helps refine the R12 zoning to do a better job, we feel, of blending with the surrounding uses and really positioning this site as a transitional site. Because there's very high-intensity uses around it. There's industrial abutting it on the north. There's high-intensity commercial use on the right side or on the east side. And then on the other two sides, the west and south, it's single-family residential. So we view this site as a transitional property, and it should be treated appropriately for that. So the purpose for the request of our rezoning is to allow for us to be more effective in that way, and the setbacks are a key to that. What this is not is it's not a request for a change to the SIA, the special intensity allocation, and it's not final plan approval or construction drawings or anything like that. We're strictly talking zoning today. This is a subject property, and I'm going to zone in a little bit. You don't happen to have a pointer, do you?
We don't.
No? Okay. I'll do my best in describing what you're looking at here. But the subject property is actually just west of Ashcroft Commons. So if you look at Highway 29, and then you look at where Ashcroft Commons is located, our property is 23 acres immediately west of that. So that's where that's located. And you can see just to the north of the site, right at the intersection where Highway Business 29 and Highway 158T, that use over there is zoned industrial, and that abuts up to the northern portion of our site. And then the Ashcroft Commons clearly is highway business, and so that abuts to the eastern portion of our site. And then surrounding the western and southern sides, that's all residential. So clearly, we've got some challenges to really create a blended application on this site. This gives you a little bit better look. So where the star is, that's our site. The pink area just abutting our site is the industrial zone. The red area is the highway business zone. And then the green, you can see the lots kind of surrounding the star, that's R12. and those are residential uses. So we definitely do see that this property, if treated appropriately, can do a good job of sort of blending all of those uses together. Creating the transition, so that's the purpose for our request. And I'm not going to go through these in the detail that Jason did, but you can see on this site plan, the buffer area is showing in green. So that buffer area, there's two locations where we've applied that buffer. It's a 20-foot buffer, and it's meant to sort of create an additional transition opportunity between our application of homes and the existing homes that are, you know, existing around the site. You can't really see it very clearly on here, hopefully it's more clear on your copies, but, you know, we've got a provision in there for a concept for pedestrian crossing. You can see where we are committing along that edge of all the homes that back up to Ashland Drive for single-family detached housing only. So we have the ability to apply, we're asking to apply duplexes and townhomes on the remainder of the site, but those two options would be prohibited along that edge along Ashland Jason also pointed out that we've recently gone through a land development planning process in 2022, and we've referenced that, we've kind of studied that in preparation for what we want to do on this site. And one of the objectives that you pointed out was that you were really looking to create expanded housing options in your community for all different income levels, and that is what we are proposing to accomplish on this. With the variety of housing that we're proposing, we see this as an opportunity to help you achieve that particular big goal. In addition to that, one of the other goals outlined was to improve multimodal methods of transportation, pedestrian walkways, bikeways. And we are proposing to advance that initiative as well with that crosswalk that we're hoping to put in that will connect our residents, and even the residents outside of us that can connect through Ashland and so forth, into the Ashcroft Commons area to be able to access those commercial uses. And then finally, you identify in your planning efforts, activity centers. And you identify activity centers throughout your jurisdiction as places where you really want to continue to invest in those. And we are in one of those activity centers. And so just to kind of bring this into focus a little bit, so this shows that we are located in growth management area number three. And it's interesting because when I read your document, you clearly understood that there was a, you stated that there's potential conflict among incompatible land uses in this area, which is exactly what we're talking about, right? You've got industrial, and you've got residential, and everything's kind of on top of each other. So this is a solution, what we're proposing, we hope you will view as a solution to bring some higher degree of compatibility to how everything is put together there. And then it's also located in activity center number four. This is one of those areas that you've really identified as a retail commercial core, and you're really looking to sort of focus development in that location. So Jason also indicated that we did send out mailings, about 60 of them to the surrounding property owners, and we held a meeting on May 8th, invited everybody to come, and we had about 17 people come. It was a good conversation. We've also had about 10 or so others reach out by phone, and we've had conversations with those folks as well. And, you know, they raised traffic concerns, access questions, questions about construction sequencing, and also questions about the eventual homes that would be built out there in the community. So in summary, what we'd like to submit to you is that this particular proposal is a reasonable proposal. It's in the best public interest because it does a good job of solving for creating the right kind of transition in between the various uses. It also provides just that, you know, sort of a higher degree of certainty for you all and for the residents around, because we are placing voluntary conditions on us. It gives you a higher degree of certainty than if we would not proceed with a conditional zoning. So we do think that that is definitely in the best interest of your city. And it is also consistent with your land development plan and also your land use plan. So with that, do you have any questions for us as the applicant?
Any questions from the board?
Couple of questions. Not that this is any kind of requirement or anything, but the neighbor to the west, where it's technically outside of the city limit, the farm land that's kind of, that adjoins the panhandle. Yeah, yes, ma'am.
Is this better?
That's better, yes. You know, where that little farm piece to the left of it, that, you know, touches the panhandle part of your property.
Yes, I see what you're talking, yes.
Any attempts been made out to reach out to that neighbor to see if whether or not some sort of land could be purchased from there to maybe create an entrance and exit off of 158 instead of forcing everything back through the subdivision and through that, through that stoplight?
We have not reached out to that property owner to engage in that conversation, not saying that we wouldn't be opposed to do that if there were amendments, but we have not done that.
Okay. And, you know, you mentioned variety of housing and stuff like that. What is kind of the vision of, what's your target, are you targeting middle income, upper income, moderate income for this type of housing?
So the R12 is really kind of targeting medium density, allows up to 10.5 units. We're actually kind of downzoning that because we're restricting instead of 240, we're going to a maximum of 200. But generally, what it's going to look like is you're going to have your higher intensity uses up against the highway business. And what we're kind of envisioning at this point is that would be a mix potentially of townhomes and duplex-type product. And then as we work our way closer to Ashland Drive, that's where we're committing to go straight, single-family detached. So it will, I don't want to speak to valuations, it's too early in the process for us to do that, and there's too many factors that influence that. But the vision is higher density applications, single-family applications, and then work our way to slightly less high density as we get closer.
Any other questions from the board? Okay. If not...
You addressed the excess off of Freeway Drive with the group that you met with.
We did have extensive conversations with them about that and their concerns, and that is something that we definitely will be pursuing as we go through the process with NC DOT.
And all of that is NC DOT, they're at the stoplight through all the way up to E.D. Wilkins and then?
Correct. That is NC DOT jurisdiction.
That has to be the state.
Yes, exactly.
Any other questions? If not, thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Yes, ma'am, thank you. At this time, we're going to open the floor for, I guess, anyone to speak for this project, for this rezoning? Is there anyone here to speak for?
So I have the list of names of people who signed up to speak. I had a Jay Harris, a Max McKinney, a Chris McDaniel, and a Dawn as well. If you're here to speak in support of or for the development, you can go ahead and approach now. If you're here to speak against, we'll move into that next. Is there anybody to speak for? You're speaking in support?
Sorry.
Okay.
Just state your name and address again.
Hi, my name is Chris McDaniel, and I live at 1408 Ashland Drive. So of course, I'm going to be directly affected as my home is going to back up to this. I was actually out of town at the previous meeting, so I could not be there. And I would like to see single-family homes on that side, of course. My concern is the traffic. I built my house there in 1989, and I've lived there almost 36 years. And I think there's a total of 15 homes on our street right now, so obviously, we have very little traffic. And this is going to, this is eventually going to dump a lot of traffic onto our street as a lot of the residents are going to come that way. Some may choose to go overall to Wilkins Way, but that would be my concern, that just is the traffic. But I'm in favor of changing the zoning. I would like to see less development there than the original plan. I do want to, I do want to refer back to a covenant that I signed in 1989 when I built my home there. I don't know that this covenant is any longer in force, but at that time, the minimum size of homes was specified, whether it was a single, single-story, story and a half, or two-story. There were specific guidelines in terms of the number of square feet in those homes, also the type of construction. The homes actually had to be approved as far as the style of the home and the construction material. So likewise, again, I knew when I moved there that this would be future development. I know that there's nothing I can do about that or any of us can do about that, but again, we're concerned about traffic. We're also concerned about the sizes of these townhomes or these single-family homes, and also what type of materials they're going to be built out of. Our homes in our neighborhood are very nice homes. A lot of them are brick, a lot of them are stucco, the different materials that there, and there's a lot of variety, but they're very nice homes. And again, we would like to see that in this development, that we have a nicer material use, not just frame homes put up. Again, I don't know what any of the plans offered, any of that. But again, so I'm sort of speaking for, but not totally, just have some concerns. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Ford, would you like to address those concerns? Thank you.
Yes, I do understand that this will bring in additional people, additional families will end up living here, and it will create additional traffic, so that is true. In terms of the actual homes themselves, it's too early in the process for us to indicate that. But what I can say is that, I think what he's referring to in terms of the covenant is that there's an HOA, and the HOA has dictated in their area, you know, specifications that apply to their HOA property. In this property, we will have an HOA, it's a requirement, City of Freedsville. So there will be a separate HOA here, and this HOA will establish very similar kinds of things where it will regulate what gets built and square footage limitations and the materials that are applied. Those are the architectural requirements that tend to be included in HOA governing documents.
I just want to make sure, this parcel, was this parcel ever part of Ashcroft? Was it ever subject to the homeowners association covenants?
No, it was not subjugated to the HOA there, yes.
Okay. Thank you. Anyone else here to speak in support? Okay. If not, we will move to against. Do we have? Yeah, I'm sorry. If anyone here wants to speak against it, please come to the podium at this time, state your name and your address, please.
Good evening, my name is John Harris. Everyone calls me Jay. I'm retired from the City of Freedsville, former Fire Marshal Assistant Fire Chief for the City of Freedsville. Thanks to Mr. Thompson's poignant question, whether this is changed from R12 to the requested zoning, it really doesn't matter. They can do it anyway. And that was a very poignant question, thank you. My concern is we're going to shoehorn 200 residences into that small area adjacent to a thriving community of single-family dwellings. The national average for a car per house is three cars per residence with three trips per day. We're talking about adding 1,800 cars a day to Ashcroft Drive, where... Excuse me. This is a neighborhood where people walk their dogs... Or children ride their bikes. My wife and I moved there, we started building our home in 2002, we moved in 2003, so we've been there a number of years. This is not in the public's best interest, as the sales pitch you guys got. This is in this investment company's best interest, not the City of Freedsville. And I realize that this is not the appropriate time for that because the zoning, basically, it doesn't matter whether you approve or not, they can still do it. So, but we as a neighborhood, and I'm speaking on my behalf, and my immediate next-door neighborhood couldn't be here tonight, we're dead set against it. If they were going to come in and build 100 homes that match our existing neighborhood, I wouldn't be here. But they're not. This is literally going to change the landscape of an entire neighborhood. But again, this is not, it does not affect the zoning. And thanks to Mr. Thompson's question and clarification, it doesn't matter. Because even under the current R12, they're allowed to do what they're doing with the exception of a few setbacks. And by the way, the initial setbacks for our covenant were 65 feet, not 20. So it's a substantial change.
Thank you, Mr. Harris. Anyone else here to speak against? Okay.
My name is Max McKinney. I live at 2507 Ashcroft. I've been at Ashcroft Drive for over probably 35 years. This is my second home. And the traffic is going to be, because I know this R12, this rezoning thing, it's nothing we can do. I know, we're stuck, you know, we've got to eat it, and I don't like it. But tie this development into Ashland Drive and add extra traffic coming around our area, there's no way I would let my little grandson or granddaughters get out and walk down that street now. It's going to be very dangerous. I don't see why they have to tie it into Ashland Drive, because that's going to go add extra to around places that we normally don't have. If you're going to have everything going out, Ed Wilkins Way. It's just going to be too dangerous. Got kids there, we got, like you said, walking dogs, and people walking around for exercise. It's going to be, it's going to be an accident ready to happen. And that was my major concern, of course, the stoplight, it's hard to get out of there now. You add 1,800 more vehicles, then what are you going to do? We're going to have a major track jam, major accidents, somebody's going to get killed, if not just many people get killed. So that was my concern. Thank you.
Anyone else here to speak against the rezoning? Okay. So at this time, at 6:50, we will close the public comments. All right. So, ma'am, board discussion?
I'm all about the development of the housing for middle income and all that, and the landowner's right to do that. We all support that. But I gotta sympathize with the existing people too. I live in a neighborhood in Houston like this, and it's a nightmare to get out the door.
I mean, I don't think this is something we can mandate.
I mean, I don't think this is something we can mandate, but maybe as a good neighbor, see if you can approach that landowner, and see if there's a way of tying your subdivision into Highway 158. Where, and I, I mean, state may say it's not, state may say it's not feasible, but I think that would help alleviate some of their concerns that, that they have. But I recognize that you all are voluntarily reducing the number of housing units, and providing buffers, and making it a true separate, trying to make it as much as possible a true separate neighborhood against what Ashcroft has.
I know Reesville needs new homes badly, but I'm concerned about the type squeeze also. I'm just wondering, we could maybe reduce the number of homes in there, if that's possible?
Well, we wouldn't be able to by our right. They have the right to actually put more homes than what they, what they proposed.
I know, that's the law, but I mean, they can do what they want.
Well, I mean, they, they always can, I mean, if they came back with less, then that's something that Jason's office can prove.
I'd like to say something also. I empathize with the owners who are there now. I've not experienced that before. But I would just encourage that the developer give serious consideration to finding some way to, to address and remediate the concerns that they have. Additional traffic is an inevitable part of the growth, and I'm no expert, but I would suggest, again, as being a good neighbor, that you attempt as best you can. Mr. Thompson's suggestion being one way, there might be other ways that you might investigate that helps remediate the concern about the traffic. Thank you.
All right, all right, we're ready to make a motion, move on this proposal? We've got a draft motion in there.
Madam Chairman, I make a motion to recommend the proposed rezoning be approved for the specified parcels to the requested zoning district, based upon consistency and reasonable misdetermination statements that are included in the council agenda packet submitted during the rezoning presentation, and as may be amended or incorporated into the motion to be included in the minutes.
Someone second?
Second.
All right, it's been moved and properly second. If we're ready for the, ready to vote? All in favor? Right hand? Any opposers? Okay, we have one opposed. All right? All right, motion carried, and the rezoning has been approved. Or the recommendation?
Recommendation.
Recommendation has been approved. Okay. All right, thank you. At this time, we're gonna move on to the second consideration, which is consideration of a conditional rezoning request to rezone two properties located on Lindville Drive, Rockingham County Parcel Number 183988, and Woodside Drive, Rockingham County Parcel Number 183987, from Residential R-12, and Residential 20, R-20, to conditional zoning Residential 6, docket number CZ202504. Jason.
Thank you again, Madam Chair. True Homes is petitioning with written consent of the current owners to rezone two parcels located off of Woodside Drive, Rockingham County Tax Parcel Number 183988, and off of Limble Drive, Rockingham County Tax Parcel Number 183987, conditional zoning Residential 6, CZR6. So there's two parcels in play here for one rezoning, we're just doing one hearing, but there's two, two of them in play as part of one development. So, the owners of the property located off of Limble Drive are James Bowen and John E. Bowen, Jr. The owners of the property located off of Woodside Drive are Larry G. Summers and Mary Lynn Summers. Each parcel encompasses an area of 9.23 acres, for a total combined area of 18.46 acres. Some history on these, so the Woodside Drive parcel is currently zoned Residential 20, R-20, and is undeveloped. The Limble Drive parcel is currently zoned Residential 12, R-12, and is also undeveloped. City Water Service is available, City Water Service is existing as a sewer service. Thank you, Drew. So some history on these, these lots were previously combined as one split-zone parcel. They subdivided them, I think it was probably about two years ago now, it's been a while back, into the northern one being the R-12 zoning, and then the southern portion being the R-20 zoning. They were previously in single ownership, but then, since the northern parcel's been purchased by someone else. As I said, water and sewer service are available to the east within the right-of-way of Limble Drive, and to the south, within the right-of-way of Woodside Drive, and to the west, within the right-of-way of Sherwood Drive. There's no streams on site. The par, the property is located in the Jordan Lake watershed, which just, just has the riparian buffer for streams, just a buffer for streams, so there's no streams on site, not applicable. This is not in Treveson Creek. The floodplain insurance rate map firm indicates no floodplains. I'll have the same spiel about conditional zoning, as we know, you know, they're, they can ask for deviations, this type, the type of PUDs, or planned unit developments, if you are familiar with other cities, they treat them as PUDs a lot. But because the Journal Assembly, back in 160D, when they put that into the general statutes back in 2018, they allow cities to use conditional zoning like a PUD. So that's what these type of developments are. So it's kind of creating a zoning district of its own. Even though we have parallel districts, which is the older way of doing this, which you know in the UDO, we were looking at doing, conditional zoning residential just says a blank catch-all, it's just you're creating its own zoning district, kind of. So I wouldn't get too hung up with the, the R-6, which that would just be the other standards other than any deviations that would apply, but that would be exactly in the conditional zoning master plan. That's just a little bit about, a little more about conditional zoning. The applicant has requested a condition to provide a 20-foot wide natural buffer, vegetated buffer around the property boundary, to be supplemented with fencing and landscaping where it's not practical or applicable. The applicant is requesting to deviate from the allowable lot sizes setbacks, setback standards for the R-6 district. Within the standard R-6 district, the allowable lot size is 6,000, they're requesting a lot size of 4,000 square feet, so that's a 2,000-square-foot reduction. Within the standard R-6 district, the allowable minimum side yard is eight feet, so they're requesting a three-foot reduction there. So this will be a type of PUD planned unit, not large. The applicant is requesting, as I said, a side yard setback of five feet, a reduction of three feet. The applicant has provided the required concept master plan, which Drew pulled up on the screens, since I forgot to do that. The applicant has provided the plan, again, as it shows, the units there, proposed 79 dwelling units, single-family detached. So these are all single-family detached dwellings. This would be the type of R-4, some cities have like R-5 and R-4 districts, they go down to like five, four, the smallest I've ever seen is R-4, 4,000. I know Winston has the R-5, which is 5,000. So this is definitely a, a PUD-style development, where you have large open space, you can see the open space at the northern portion and the southern portion of the lot, that's just planned to be just left as, as natural open space, which the H-Way could do something with, but there would be the 20-foot buffer that goes around. And this area is characterized as trans, again, kind of transitional, because you have, to the west along Sherwood, you have apartments, and to the north, you have apartments. To the south, which I know this is kind of flipped around, so this is not lining up, you know, with how you're looking at it, but to the east, and to the southeast, you have more medium density. The R-20 zoning is a little bit more medium to low, kind of, not everything is 20,000 square feet down through there, because these are some older lots. So again, you're looking at a transitional area with a type of clustered buffered development, kind of in between multifamily, and like medium to low density, single-family. So that's a little bit about the surrounding area. Per Article 5, Section 1 of the zoning ordinance, as we know, any major change, so if there's any increase in density, any type of major change, they would have to come back, you know, before planning board and council to request those changes. So you're not gonna see any higher density, and that's also not gonna see any change of land use. So this is the land use that they're proposing in the conditional zoning, as single-family detached units. Meyer changes, of course, can be approved by staff, so like small reorientations and things, but there's not a lot of room right here to reorient anything if they did, but that could be staff-approved if they did. The proposed conditional rezoning aligns with goal number three, the reasonable land development plan to expand housing, that includes expanding the housing stock, providing a variety of housing options that are attractive and affordable to people of all income levels. The property is located in GMA 3, just like the last one, our suburban growth management district, which surrounds the city center, that's, that encompasses the area to the south, southwest, north, northwest, and the west of the city. GMA 3 is predominantly characterized, makes a residential, commercial development, with ample vacant land available for development. According to the land development plan, GMA prioritizes expansion of the residential, of residential development, and provides an existing transportation network that's, that's capable of accommodating growth. Additionally, GMA 3 residential development is in close proximity to commercial office and industrial employment and so forth, so this district is planned for expansion of residential development. Staff finds that the proposed conditional rezoning is consistent with the goals of the reasonable land development plan, that it's reasonable and in the public interest. Planning staff recommends that the proposed conditional rezoning be approved. I'll be happy to answer any questions.
So how many units? I see, it says, I see it says, construction up to 79.
Correct, yes, 79 units or more.
Okay.
Jason, two questions. First, does Reesville even have any areas where 4,000-square-foot lots for single-family homes?
We have some, in some older areas of the city, you would be surprised on how small lots we have. Especially in the R-6 areas, they're close to the northern part of the city, and to the eastern side, that were built, a lot of them were built like at the turn of the century, around early 1900s. So this was a style of development once upon a time. Once you saw zoning come into play in the mid-'60s, you saw the increased lot sizes and so forth. But you're seeing nowadays a lot of cluster developments, a lot of more, you know, tied together, that's a common request. 4,000 square feet, I'm sure we have some, somewhere, I've seen 5,000, I know, off the top of my head, probably somewhere, somewhere there's a 4,000, there's very small lots in some of the older areas of the city, so.
I know there's no R-6 that abuts this property, but is there R-6 in the area?
Yes, so along Sherwood Drive, just south of here, y'all remember Sherwood Glen, the, so there is conditional zoning R-6 district just south of here along Sherwood. So it's not, not uncommon to see that in this area, and also, of course, the abutting Willowbrook development that was approved several years ago, is conditional zoning R-6, is off of Sherwood, so that's probably about less than a half mile down the road, like probably quarter. So it's not uncommon for this area to see conditional zoning R-6.
I'm sorry, I've got another question too. I know that, you say there's no streams on this property, but it's not far from Little Treveson Creek, is that?
That's to the south, yes, sir.
Right, that's not something that's gonna be affected by the, by the limitations that the other subdivision?
No, so this is not in the, so the watershed geographic boundary is according to the state, we actually have a, a map that shows where that's at in the city, and that's to the southwest of this property.
Okay, so this doesn't, doesn't reach that?
No, this is not in the Treveson Creek watershed. We have two watersheds, Treveson Creek, which is, has the, the impervious limit, which I've heard several times, this one's in Jordan Lake, which, Lake Jordan, you all know, down toward White County, massively, right at the northern, where it starts. And it flows, everything from here flows downhill, down toward Orange County, and Wayne County, and everything, so, yeah, there, there's no streams on site, so there's no watershed effect here at all, or, or regulations.
Any concerns about vehicles? You know, you've got such small lots, trying to cram vehicles on all these lots, and, you know, where are they gonna park?
Well, they still have to drive two, two off-street parking spaces per unit, so that's still a requirement, so they still have to have space off-street on their lot for two parking spaces.
Can you do that on 4,000 square feet?
They're gonna have to find a way, that's, that's a requirement, that wasn't a deviation. Staff, in order to approve the plot, we would have to see that. So we would have to make sure that there was two spaces, you know, accommodated for those, so.
You're fine, I have no ask questions. Any other questions? Any questions for Jason?
I do. In relationship to the traffic, gentlemen earlier quoted, and I'm not sure the number's correct, that's average is three vehicles per household? Is that a correct number?
So, the way that traffic studies are done by traffic engineers is, it's not done by the average cars, the average number of trips generated by a land use. And there are traffic engineers who specialize in this type of work, and there's an engineering textbook that they publish, they adjust it, you know, every so often, as, you know, things change and everything, that has those estimated number of trips per land use. So like, single-family detached has a, you know, estimated trip generation of one or two trips per day, whereas like, single-family detached townhomes would have its own estimated trip generation, so it's not, I think that might be a little of a generalization, I don't know, I would have to check to see what that is, I'm not a traffic engineer, I'm just kind of familiar with how a TAA works. So, as far as traffic goes, you would look at the land use, trips generated, not necessarily average cars per household, because they're not gonna be driving all three cars every single day. That's why traffic engineers look at the trips generated, not necessarily how many cars they own.
Understood.
Or how, I mean, it can vary, you know, in one house, you may have a single person, you know, these are small, small lots, you may have a single person, you may have, you know, two people, so forth, you know, you don't know how many people are occupants, you have to average that. So I think that just going based off the number of cars is an overgeneralization.
Okay. Which, this subdivision has more options as far as getting out of it than the others?
It's two, it's two points ingress and egress, but you can go multiple directions.
Go Limble or Woodside.
Yeah. Yeah. Any other questions for Jason, on the board? If not, thank you, Jason. If the applicant is here, and would like to speak? Yes, sir. Come up and state your name and your address, please, thank you.
My name is Joseph Eaton, my address is 8065 West West Drive, Blue Creek, North Carolina. Just willing to answer any questions you guys might have concerning this community.
Any questions from the board?
Why 4,000 square feet?
You know, we found that we're having really good success with that. The, a lot of times, the lot, the lots are shortened up at the back, to keep from, folks from putting fences all the way to the back, it allows us some room behind those lots, because you'll see there's quite a bit of open space behind them, in order to have the drainage well and such, be out there where they don't have to maintain those, it's HOA portion of the property, and they can, you know, if they were to, they don't own it, so they can't put a fence back there and block drainage esms and things like that. And we found that a lot of people, you know, they're living an active lifestyle, they're about going to the ball fields with their kids, and, you know, a large yard is not what a lot of our consumers are wanting these days.
How big of houses are you looking to put on these lots?
So we're looking to do between 1,500 and 2,300 square feet. We've got master up and down options that would be after one year, two-in-one-car garage options. options as well. So that kind of answers your parking spaces. So we'll have a garage parking spot and at least one in the driveway. And, yeah, I think that's about.
You mentioned that you, these lots, you have found that works well in other subdivisions? You have other subdivision that you've had success with this so far?
We do. We've got an active one that we're developing right now in Winston-Salem, very similar characteristics to them, and a couple others as well.
Any in the size of a community like, sorry, let's get ready to ask this one. Any in the size of a community like Reedsville though?
They just, it's kind of on the outskirts of Winston, so no, sir.
I was going to ask the question, how old are the subdivisions that you have? Are they five years old, 10 years old? So I'm looking for the history of how they serve the community is what I'm looking for.
Right, so we're a North Carolina, South Carolina builder, we're not a national builder. The triad division is the division that I work out of. We've been in the triads since 2000, I think ten or 12. So we've had, we've got active communities throughout the triad. The closest one we've got to here is probably Greedy Fork. We've been an active builder in Greedy Fork for years, so just 15 minutes down the road there, if you want to see the homes that we're building there, you know, we've got some of the same models that are available there would be available here as well. So we found that we've got, you know, the, we've seen the communities really thrive. You know, we've got, I was recently at a meeting at High Point with our Rich Fork development that we did down there, is one of the fastest selling developments in the triad, and the homeowners couldn't have been happier. They were, you know, it was really neat to be part of that. So we do our best to deliver a really great experience for our clients. These homes are not, in general, pre-built and then sold. Typically, we develop the land, and then our sales team will sell into that. The folks will get to come to a showroom, they'll get to pick out the finishes for their homes, get the paint colors, all those type of things, so it's not a canned product. All of the vinyl siding, they pick out, you know, all those different things, some of the characteristics, the elevations, if they want some rock or if they want brick, those type of things. It's not just a set, like the same thing all the way down the road. They're all personalized depending on the budget of the client. So it allows them the ability to, you know, tailor to their needs.
Okay. This may be premature. Can you give us an idea for the price mark for these houses would be?
It's a little bit, you know, it is premature for that. You know, we generally serve the first-time home buyer and step-up home buyer. So, you know, we would anticipate, you know, we would anticipate this, the homes at this location being probably a little less costly than what we're doing at Greedy Fork.
Okay.
Fork has some expensive homes.
They do, now, some of those are on water lots.
Yeah.
So it just, yeah, it depends. Yeah, we're, you know, we're a quality builder, we use quality components, you know, we use well-known components in the homes, you know, we use architectural shingles for the shingles, you know, we try to step everything up a little bit more than what you would see with some of the other folks.
One last question. What are you envisioning those open spaces looking like? Are they going to be natural wooded? Are y'all going to maintain them short grass or just?
It's to be determined. What we, you know, what we wouldn't want to do is to place an undue burden on the HOA by having some huge area that they would have to constantly maintain. So, you know, we've got to determine exactly what we'd do with those, but do it some type of blend where it's usable, but also not a maintenance burden on the HOA.
One question. It's really, in these subdivisions typically, is it the homeowner or the HOA that's responsible for the maintenance of the yards?
It will be the homeowner, yeah. And then the HOA will pick up the common spaces, yes, sir.
Any other questions? If not, thank you, thank you. All right, at this time, we're going to open up, open the floor for public comments. So is there anyone here to speak in support of this rezoning? Anyone here in support of, would like to speak? If not, is there anyone here that is against this rezoning and would like to speak? Please come to the podium, state your name and your address. Thank you, good evening.
My name is Christopher Murphy. I have lived in Rockingham County almost my entire life. My wife and I bought our forever home on the south end of the strong 1510 Woodside Drive. I have serious concerns. When we bought our property in 2010, the home that my son was born in, we knew the parcel behind us was for sale. I mean, I'm not kidding myself, you know, you, there's vacant land. There was a for sale sign there when we bought it 15 years ago, you know. But when we bought it, we looked at the zone, it was on R twenty. And that is the neighborhood that resembles the neighborhood around this would be built behind me. I've got neighbors around me, they're great folks, very nice homes. This is not anything like the neighborhood around it. It's just not. An R twenty zoning and an R four, this is, this doesn't really, I mean, we might have 4,000 square foot lots in Reedsville, but this zoning does not exist. That's my first concern. If someone came in tomorrow and started building homes behind me and on the R twenty side that is on R twenty, good for you, that's great. We need more homes in Reedsville. We need more homes in Reedsville. I think Mr. Richard, the one, we need more homes in Reedsville. I agree with that. But this is on R twenty for a reason, and I think this is a little absurd. My second concern is if this passes, the proposed road that comes out on the Woodside Drive is currently my driveway. The way my home was built in 1965 is that the, if you look at the city map, you'll see my parcel, and you'll see a strip that's 30 feet wide next to my parcel, and I don't believe it is on this proposed plan, but it is on the city parcels, it is on the GIS. And that's actually owned by the city of Reedsville, and it is Woodside Drive, excuse me, Colonial Avenue. So if you stand at the intersection, only avenue goes this way, and my gravel driveway would be behind you. My real concern for this, whether it's zoned R twenty or R twelve or R six, is how do I get to my house during the construction of a subdivision? And I don't know if that's a question you guys can answer, or if that's a question for you, but currently, that's how I, my carport is in the back of my house. The only way to get to my home is to turn onto that gravel drive, and you're welcome to come to Woodside Drive and see where they have gravel drive on the road. It's easy to find. You know, if we've got a subdivision going in here, how do I access my house? Because that's my driveway. Those are my two major concerns. Beyond that, there's this area just to the side of me, I guess if that's south, that would be, never eat soggy waffles, that would be to the west, which is called a BMP area. And we looked that up and saw, said, but it didn't really make a whole lot of sense to me, but, you know, I don't really want big nasty retention upon full mosquitoes next to my house. That was my other real concern with this construction. Again, I'm not opposed to this being constructed at R twenty. I'm vehemently opposed to this being constructed at what is essentially R four. The applicant mentioned Greedy Fork. Greedy Fork is definitely closer to R twenty than it is to this. And then the only other questions I had is if this was developed, what's going into the buffer? Is it a fence? Is it trees? Is it shrubbery? You know, I don't know that you guys can answer that either, but that was my only other concern or question, so.
I'm going to call the applicant back up, I'm sorry, so I didn't write your name, and see if he can help answer a few of your questions. Thank you so much for coming forward.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay.
Yes, along the buffer, it'll be left natural unless it can't be allowed to be left natural. In this case, we would put some type of trees or bushes or fencing that would produce the same effect.
And the concern he had about his drive, his driveway, have you all looked into that and what that?
You know, the driveway issue, I'm sure something can be sorted out there to allow, you know, to create access, but, you know, there should be a right of way there, is my understanding.
Oh, yes. Thank you.
Civil engineer, do I need his name, address, all that as well?
Yes, please, for the minutes.
I go Chester Court, Greensboro, North Carolina. So notice that the piece of land, excuse me, that you're referencing is owned by the city of Reedsville is the right of way. So we're connecting our proposed road into that right of way and giving you a new driveway onto that road. To your point during the construction of it, we can, obviously, we have two access points in sight. Construction entrance can be the one, not by your driveway, and it can remain gravel until it's time to put it in, at which point it'll be paved. Paving usually can be done relatively quickly.
What's relative to quick, quickly, because I mean, you know, relatively quickly is a week. Let me cut your driveway off for a week.
I understand that. No, I appreciate that. I'm obviously not a builder, so I can't.
So you'd have to come back up to the podium, okay.
Now, just asking a question. I mean, you know, I do understand there's two entrances, I understand that.
Yes, sir. Jason? You have to come to the podium, sir.
Is a public right of way, so there would obviously have to be, that would be converted to a street. So your driveway would still come off of that public right of way. So like you said, there would be a temporary construction entrance right there, so you would not lose access to your house, that would just be converted to a street, and your driveway would come off of that.
I can speak to the driveway.
Thank you. Come forward, state your name and your address, please.
My name's Larry Summers. I live at 321 Summers Loop, Reedsville, North Carolina. Previously, my wife and I had lived at 1504 Woodside Drive for 30 years. The property in question was owned by my father-in-law. He purchased a 60-acre farm back in the 1940s. It's 18-acre tract is what's left of that farm. Now, the driveway he's referring to is actually not his land. That house belonged to the Williams family, and long ago, we gave them permission to use that. So he actually doesn't have a driveway on his property. Most people on Woodside have a driveway going, you know, on their property, but that land just doesn't have a driveway there. So he's actually using the public right of way there. You know, at some point, arrangement will have to be made so he can get into his house. But once that street, if it's approved, was completed, he would have access off of that street.
Thank you for that, Clarence. Thank you. Anyone else here to speak against the rezoning? If not, we're going to go ahead and close the public comments. Okay. All right, public comments are closed now at 7:25. Okay, board discussion? Any comments, anything?
Actually, I have a question for the developer regarding. Sorry. I will leave that question unanswered and asked.
Okay. Any discussion? Any other discussion between amongst the board? If not, we're going in. Just among us.
We can discuss among us.
Discuss among us. What's your thoughts?
About the, so, do we expect it to fill with water, or is it just going to be grass? This is a little different for the city of Reedsville.
A little different for the city of Reedsville, it's a little different as far as the. All right. Any discussion? If not, would someone, does someone want to move to accept the rezoning request?
I make a motion to recommend the proposed rezoning be approved for the specific partials requested zoning district based on the consistency and reasonableness determination, statements that are included in the council agenda packet submitted during the rezoning presentation, and as may be amended incorporated into the motion to be included in the minutes.
All right, can I get a second?
One second.
It has been moved and properly second that the planning and zoning board approve the rezoning recommendation. All right, all in favor, let it be known by the sign of the right hand. Any opposers? All right, here are none. Recommendation approved. All right, thank you all. All right, we have our last consideration on the agenda, consideration of a text amendment request to amend the special use permit standards for shopping centers to allow drive-in restaurants and indoor amusement, docket number T 202502. Okay, I'm sorry.
Thank you again. Staff's petitioning to amend Article five, section three, special uses of the reasonable zoning ordinance to amend the special use requirements for shopping centers. This amendment will repeal language that prohibits drive-in restaurants while introducing, also introducing indoor amusement as a permitted use in the special use permit requirements for shopping centers. So some history here, this is actually the first special use permit that Reedsville ever adopted, which you all know is requires quasi judicial approval, has to go to city council, we previously have done recommendations and so forth, so this is the first they adopted. I think Penrose Mall was the first one. So we have several across the city that have these special use permits that have been issued over the years. So this would amend those standards so that it would allow some more flexibility, because it's kind of interesting that we outlawed like drive-through, we call them drive-ins in the ordinance, but really what I'm saying is drive-throughs. So you're talking Chick-fil-A, you know, those were, you typically find those in shopping centers, but we were a bit perplexed by that. It was the interesting thing that they prohibited from shopping centers as they permitted these different lots across the city that are shopping centers. Two things that we're proposing to remove are game rooms, which we permitted as those NFT game rooms, we're proposing to remove those, and indoor theaters will be removed from the list of permitted uses in shopping centers, as they are included in the definition of indoor amusement. So movie theaters would still be allowed in a shopping center if someone wanted to be one, it's just covered under indoor amusements. We're just taking it out as a use, so it's not redundant. So currently, the ordinance states that eating and drinking establishments are permitted with the exception of drive-in restaurant facilities. By removing the language, restaurants will be allowed in shopping center developments, it'll change, and the change will help expand dining options throughout the city. Very shopping centers, we have permitted, the planning staff have researched numerous other cities, and the Piedmont Triad and I would say all across the state. Uh, it'll change and, uh, the change will help expand dining options throughout the city, uh, various shopping centers. We have permitted, uh, the planning staff have researched numerous other cities. And the people I've tried, and I would say, you know, across the state, um, uh, we couldn't find anywhere else where they have a specific shopping center, like, big, you know, your, your high intensity commercial development where you're prohibiting drive-in restaurants. Like, that's typically where you find them.
Find them.
Or high intensity commercial areas. So we, we find that removing these is, is in the public interest and will add a little bit of flexibility. Um, the text amendment request is consistent with the reasonable land development plan under goal number two, a strong local economy, there's considerable need for commercial development, including restaurants, retail, and amusements and so forth in Reedsville. Uh, this amendment aligns with goal number two by removing regulatory barriers for commercial development and assist in addressing the need for more, uh, a more diverse economy by allowing those drive-through restaurants and so forth. So, um, the planning staff recommend adoption of the proposed text amendment. I'll be glad to happy, I'll be glad to answer any of your questions.
Jason, just so I can picture it, give me an example here in town of what it is that we've used special use permit, but this will cover that now?
Correct. So shopping centers are your high intensity commercial developments. Two of them off the top of my head, you have Penrose Mall, is permitted as a shopping center. So is the food line off of Way Street, uh, that's another shopping center. Um, you've got the Lowe's Home Improvement, uh, up near, uh, the food, the other food line. Uh, so those are some, several shopping centers that we have permitted, and most of those were done in the 90s, those permits were issued. Now, the one for Penrose was issued before they built it in the 60s. That's why it was the first one that we adopted, um, way back in the original zoning ordinance.
But we actually don't have a restaurant right now that fits.
Not a drive-in restaurant. None of these have drive-in restaurants. No.
So the, the Lowe's Food Shopping Center, I know Wendy's is there, is that, is that, would that be similar to this?
That one has one.
Okay.
Uh, yeah.
Wendy's would be an out parcel, right? To them, yeah.
Okay. That's not like, take all these restaurants are out parcels.
That may not be, I would have chickens.
Mm-hmm. Well, I'm definitely in favor for the amendment, and as you said, it, you know, it just attracts new restaurants and dining options to come to the city, um, and give our residents and future residents something, some options. That's for sure. Um, all right. Any other questions for Jason?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Just ask for your against, just in case anybody's out there to speak.
Anyone here, um, to speak, to speak in support of the text amendment? Anyone here to speak against the text amendment? All right. If not, we'll have a board discussion. You better. Okay with it? I'm okay with it. Okay. And I thought I read.
Does it take a motion?
All right, so now we just need a motion?
Uh, Madam Chairman, I will make a motion that the proposed text amendment, T-2025-02, be approved.
Okay. All right, it has been moved improperly second that we, um, approve the recommended text amendment request. All in favor, let it be known by the sign, your right hand? Any opposers? All right, hear none. Motion carried, and the text amendment recommendation has been approved. All right. Thank you. The directors report.
Thank you again, uh, and chair and board members. So I don't have too much to report. Uh, last month, we didn't have any items from y'all that went to council. Uh, we did have, I know y'all heard about the Salem Church Road annexation and rezoning that was proposed. Uh, that was tabled by our city council. The resolution to initiate the investigation of that, uh, annexation was tabled to the next month. So, uh, the rezoning's been postponed, so y'all will probably hear that maybe next month. Um, so that'll be, the resolution will be considered again by city council at the next meeting. So that's, uh, that's the most recent update with, with that. Um, as far as projects go, uh, they're still cranking with the apartments, still working on getting closer to moving in the first, uh, couple of buildings, uh, before you get their, uh, if you get occupancy for those couple of buildings, um, because they're going to try to finish up those, move people in, and just keep working and then go on. Um, so that's where they're at with that. Um, no, no other real project updates, not really nothing really notable. Um, and a personal one, um, and I know some of you know, um, this will be my last meeting with you all. I've enjoyed working with you all. Um, I've accepted the position of deputy planning and development director with Guilford County. So it's my last meeting with you all. I've enjoyed working with you all, and I wish you all the best in the future. I think we've laid a lot of good foundational development that we've built over the next half decade. I think you're going to see a lot of development interest in Reedsville, and you're going to see that commercial come afterwards. So I think that we're just laying the groundwork now, it's just going to take a while, nothing happens overnight, especially in development, so. But I think we've done a lot of work, a lot of change, a lot of change that was needed in Reedsville since I've been here. So I thank you all for having me, and, uh, I wish you all the best in the future.
Absolutely. Well, I can say on behalf of the board, we will definitely say congratulations.
Yes.
Definitely wish you all the best, and thank you for your leadership. Thank you for understanding and guiding and helping with, you know, what you've done, and definitely with the growth of Reedsville, and I know, um, more things are coming, you know. Um, absolutely. Absolutely, so. Anybody else? Anybody else?
That's, that's.
Absolutely.
Well, that, the reboot of UDA. Uh, so y'all will continue along with that. Um, so the most recent update with that is that we are planning a, uh, another community forum, uh, in September, uh, that will be open to the public, uh, to have a panel. They're going to have our consultant chat, um, here to speak, and also have like a panel of city staff and also like, uh, local developer, and we're still in, kind of in the development stage of it, but, uh, that, that'll be happening in September. You all will be asked to be there. Um, I don't have the date, I think it's September 17th, but we'll get y'all that date to make sure y'all are all aware, well, or they will, I may not be here at that time, but, uh, Mr. Ray will, Mr. Ray will be still working with y'all. And, uh, yeah, so that'll be the next step. Uh, there's a lot going on at state level if y'all haven't. There's some things didn't make crossover, um, some things did. Uh, one, the big bill, 765, the omnibus regulatory reform bill is, has not necessarily gone away, it's gone into a finance committee. So that's still, it could be resurrected, is what I like to call a zombie bill after crossover.
They like to, they like to gut a bill completely and put something else in there.
You could see that. Um, so, yeah, I know everyone across the state is watching that very closely, but I know there's been a lot of opposition from local government across the state, um, 2765, um, as well, the Rockingham County, uh, came out in opposition of it, and so did the city of Reedsville. So, um, we'll see what happens and, you know, you never know, so, that's all I have.
Saw something on Facebook, um, regarding a, kind of a town forum, and then something for the, uh, city council about the downtown social district as there.
Absolutely, so that's something we've been working on. We discussed it with city council at the retreat, uh, this past February. Uh, we've been looking at doing a social district downtown for a while. There's been some interest, people have come in, spoke on it, and so, um, I think they're just kind of wanting to talk with the public and talk with them about what it is and everything, and, um, because it has not been, we've discussed it, but there has been no vote taken on it at all. Uh, it's just been discussion up to this point. Um, so, and like a social district is where obviously, I'm sure you all are familiar with them in Greensboro, they have like three, maybe, somewhere, something like that, uh, where you can, in the common areas, you carry and, you know, some alcohol, um, but businesses can choose, pick and choose, they don't have to allow anyone in with alcohol, they can say, no, I don't want that, within their, um, but businesses can participate. So, um, there's some regulatory boundaries that the state establishes that we have to follow. We don't have a lot to say. We, the main things that the local government has to say and are where it goes, time of operation, and the days that you operate, the times and dates of operation are mainly what the local government has to say. And also, there's a design of the cups.
Yeah.
The state requires a logo, they require standardized, uh, identification, you have to have the time and date, and where you've got it from written on the cup. State's very strict in that aspect. So there's some things we have discretion on, some things, most things we don't. So it's just kind of implementing what the state's put in place for, uh, social districts, so. Uh, but I think the idea behind it is, I've discussed this with our economic development director several times, and help drafting the ordinance, uh, to adopt, and, um, so, the idea is kind of a chicken or the egg thing, you know, the idea is hopefully putting it in place, and then you get people to come, you build it, they'll come.
Right. That's right.
And to have it in place, that way people can come in and say, okay, if you have a social district in place, because we know, we all know right now that there's not a lot of businesses that sell downtown, whether it's the eastern part of the city. So it's just kind of a thing to kind of put it in place, to try to, you know, keep trying to get more restaurants and more things downtown that will keep people walking around and everything, so. That's the whole intent behind a social district, and, and we've researched, I know that the economic development department, you know, researched those in depth, and got feedback from other local governments about their experience with them, because some people can be a little hesitant on them, but on, and overall, like, everything that I've seen from the response he got was positive, 99% of it, um, is positive, so. Other jurisdictions are having, um, success with them. Eden is.
Madison.
Madison. Um, so it's just something that we want to bring forward and for consideration to see, you know, talk with the public about at that meeting, so, um, I encourage everyone to attend that.
Will any of that come before the planning board to look at, or?
No, that's, that's strictly city code. That goes all straight to council. Um, yeah, boundary map, all, all the ordinance, that's just, the Eden, those ordinances goes directly to the city council. You all are the keepers of the zoning ordinance and then rezonings and things, and so those type of things come before y'all, but this one won't.
Any other questions for Jason? If not, I guess it is time, do we have to make a motion to adjourn the meeting? Okay. Will someone move to adjourn the meeting?
I move to adjourn.
A second.
Okay. All right, all in favor?